Are you going to wait for last?
What are we going to take it down?
Last.
Last. Okay.
Good evening. Welcome to the October 1st meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustments in Gostown, New Hampshire. My name is Kathy Hooton and I am Chairman of the Zoning Board of Adjustments. The Gostown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and three alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the zoning board, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at the Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. And I will state at this present time, there are two members and an alternate here, which would make a three-member board only. So anybody who is here with an application would have to have all three of us vote to the affirmative for the application slash appeal to be approved. If you are agreed by a decision made by the zoning board tonight, you have the right to appeal to Superior Court. However, before appealing to Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And having said that, I would now like the members and staff to introduce themselves.
Kathy Champagne.
Gail LeBruck.
And Brian Rose, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay, at, um, this time, I don't have an agenda. Do you want to specify that Kathy will be a voting alternate? Yeah. Um, because of the situation we have here tonight, Kathy Champagne, I am, um, she will be the voting alternate, so therefore we will have a three-member board. Okay, now, approval of the minutes. Do I have any motion for the approval of the September minutes?
Well, I could, I could make the motion, but since I wrote them, I'm not sure.
Then I will make the motion.
Did you, you read the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and he, okay, then I will second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The vote carries 3-0-0. Okay. Um, I am going to go a little bit out of order tonight, and the reason being is that we have had a request for a change of the meeting. The applicant in the second position, Harold Leonard and Teresa Leonard, due to personal reasons, are unable to attend the meeting tonight. Uh, I, I wanted to make sure if there was anybody that was here, that they understood that. At this point, I think I would like to entertain a motion from the, um, members to vote on whether or not to continue this until the November 5th meeting.
So moved.
Seconded? Okay, we have a motion to continue and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there being none, the motion carries 3-0-0. Okay. So, starting our public hearing. First on our agenda, Bel Air Associates applicants owners are seeking a variance to erect an internally illuminated LED message center sign at the Bel Air Nursing Home property to replace their two existing signs. The variance is needed because the proposed sign is located as close as 60 feet to the front property line of abutting lots in the Residential One District that are across the street and as close as 90 feet to a lot in the Residential One District that abuts this property to the west, where a section 663 requires that internally illuminated signs within 250 feet of a residential property, R1 or R2 district boundary, only be illuminated by a shielded external white light. No internal illumination is permitted. The property is located on 29 Center Street, map 28 Lot 17, in the Commercial District. This has been continued from the September 10th meeting. Um, at this time, I would ask if there is somebody here representing Bel Air Associates and, and please come forward.
Evening, hi. My name is Attorney William Ammon, from Manchester.
Could you say your last name?
Sure. Ammon, A-M-A-N-N.
Yes.
And, um, you're representing Bel Air?
Yes.
And Mr. Robert Weitz is also with me, the owner.
Yes. Good evening.
Thank you, how are you?
Good. Um, I think I made it clear to you, um, in the, uh, maybe not to your person, uh, I don't know if you were in the room at that time, but honestly, but you need the three member, all three of us to vote in the affirmative.
Correct.
Um, with that on the, on the table, um, you can continue or you can ask for a continuance.
I appreciate that, and, uh, Mr. Letts explained to me right before I came in, you're a little shorthanded tonight.
Yeah.
And that happens. Given that, we would like to change things.
This does change things.
Well, you still, you still need three of the four.
You still need three of the four of us.
Correct.
To, to, would you like to have another moment to discuss this with your client?
Yes, I was going to ask for a continuance based on
Yes.
Three here. Now, uh, we have a fourth, so if I may
Yes.
With the board's permission, just, uh, maybe two minutes to discuss.
Yes, I, I think that would be appropriate for you to have that discussion with your client.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For those that are, uh, waiting, Vivian Blondo, member, is the fourth member to be here with us this evening. And we will just wait a couple of minutes so they, giving them an opportunity to discuss the situation and see what direction they would like to go, go in.
Kathy?
Yeah.
If, if I'm not conflicted, do they still, do they still have the option to ask?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because that might, that might change things.
They still have the option to ask. Because they, they, if you don't have fi, if you don't have a five-member board, if you don't have a five-member board and there's only four of us that are here, they still have the right to ask for a continuance.
I meant because of.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Is that your decision to me?
Blood pressure's 187. 187 over 95.
Hi.
Yeah, but it stays like that for the next couple, the last couple of hours.
I'll be back.
Yeah. Have him do a lot of walking, have him do a lot of walking and drink a lot of fluids.
While we're waiting, I just want to let all of you know that tonight after, um, we get through our applications, that we are going to be reviewing the possibility of Alan Yatton, um, becoming, and we will be voting on whether or not to accept his application to be an alternate on the Zoning Board of Adjustments. And for all of you who are not familiar with Mr. Yatton, he has been very active in the government of this town for many, many years. He's been a past, as Planning Board Chairman, and I believe he's also on the, um, Economic Development, or has been on the Economic Development Committee. So we will be entertaining that, um, application after we go through our, our applicants. For anyone who might be interested, on October 9th, the Greater Manchester Economic Development, there is a Greater Manchester Economic Development Summit that will be taking place. And, um, this has to do with the economic development of the region of this area, the Manchester area. It's put on by the Greater Manchester Chamber of Commerce, and it is a day-long gathering of top business leaders and policymakers to learn about and discuss ongoing and future infrastructure and economic development projects and initiatives. Again, that's October 9th, 2013, at the Radisson Hotel. Registration is at 7:30 in the morning, and they appear to be wanting to adjourn at 4:30 PM. So if anybody is interested in that, that's going on October 9th. I see that we have our applicants back into the room. I believe they have probably made a decision, and if you'd like to come forward.
Yes, I, I will name it again. We would like to ask for a continuance. We really are, would like to be, we're prepared to go forward tonight, and, um, we wish we could, we just think it probably makes the most sense to have the full board, and, uh, and so that's what we would like to do.
Okay. All right, so, um, that being said, do I have a motion to continue the hearing until November? So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a seconded to continue your application until November. All those in favor?
November 5th, right?
November 5th.
November 5th.
The first Tuesday in November. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there being none, we'll see you November 5th.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good Halloween, and a Columbus Day weekend. I have my, of course you can't tell, but I have orange beads on with my black blouse for the first day of October. Very festive. And we already, um, jurispracted on this, the continuance on the second applicant, and we will continue that until November 5th, per their request. And the final, um, applicant this evening is Christopher and Carleen Glover. Owners applicants are seeking a variance and a special exception to build a 29 by 26, which equals 754 square feet garage, square foot garage, with an accessory dwelling unit on top of it, above it, attached to the existing single-family house. The variance is needed because the proposed accessory dwelling unit is 754 square feet in size, where a section 521 of the Gostown zoning ordinance states that the maximum size allowable for accessory dwelling units is 650 square feet. A special exception is required because section 3.12, table A6, lists accessory attached dwelling units as a use permitted by special exception. The property is located at 54 Durango Drive, map 6 Lot 67-8, in the agricultural zone. Is there, is the applicant here?
I am.
Would you like to come forward and introduce yourself to the board?
Hi, I'm Chris, live at 54 Durango Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I have some plot plans and stuff.
Okay, we'll take a look at them, sure.
There's two each.
And because we
Walk around and hand them around, you just want to pass them down.
Oh, is this updated from the last, or is it just zoomed in?
Yeah, it's just
I will do that in a minute, I just wanted to
It's just larger.
They actually did get this, I think, in their package, so, at least this one they did.
I'll do that in a minute. Mr. Grover, you do understand that you have the option to continue or go forward?
I do.
And you're going to go forward?
Yes.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion on regional impact.
I'll make a motion to find that there is none.
So a second. Okay, there's a motion, a second, that this does not have any regional impact. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there being none, the motion carries 4-0-0.
Um, as some of you know, I was here last, last, uh, month. I am, I am trying to get the variance on the accessory dwelling and going over the allotted square footage by, uh, 104 square feet. However, per, you know, our last meeting, I brought that square footage down, um, a bit to fit it within my setbacks. And, um, I'm not sure if you've got the drawings and the, uh, plot plans, you can see where I want to put it. And this is for, uh, my parents and my grandmother, who are going to be moving back into the house, to my home. So.
Your parents and your grandmother?
Yes.
Wow.
Mr. Grover, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Based on this drawing, are you having a, a third floor up here?
Um, yes, because I shrunk the square footage, now I'm going to use that, that third, I guess it's a second floor, we're talking, if, third, if it's the garage.
Yeah, the garage plus the
Right.
Unit and, uh, what's, what is the third floor?
Well, now it's, it's, it needs to be another bedroom, because I'm moving my parents and my grandmother in, so.
Can you tell me how you calculated your square footage?
Yeah, that's where I was getting
How I calculated it?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, it's
Let me, let me explain at least.
Tight.
Um, yeah, the width times the height, but you have to count both floors if you are counting, um, two floors.
Okay.
So if it were, if it were to be one floor, then you'd have 754 square feet. If you're having two floors, you'd actually have double that.
All right.
You'd actually have 1,400 square feet.
So you counted just the footprint?
I did, yes.
Yeah.
And then we're back at square one, I guess.
Would you, would you
It's larger than last time, if it's double.
Wow.
Yes, that would be correct.
Would you want us to continue this, for you to make any, any corrections to the application you might feel is necessary?
Um, if you want, like, we didn't have this before.
Right.
So if you want to say, okay, I'm taking this back and I'm saying, okay, I'm only going to have one floor, you know, one floor, no room up on the top?
Right.
Then
Well, that's how it was originally going to be, but I was over the setbacks and the, this
Does the layout
Plot plan was quite large.
Does the layout have a bedroom on the bottom at all?
Yes.
So the second bedroom up on the top would, would just be in addition to whatever
Well, I mean, it's
Excuse me.
Right.
All right. Look, can we
I'm just trying to get a clarification on what the application is up front, so that we know what we're talking about with, uh
Right.
With the discussion.
Right. And, and I think the clarification is that he has two floors, it's 764 square feet each. So, my question to you is, um, if we go forward with this, I mean, we're obviously going forward with the wrong dimensions of the application, and as, um, because they were not, that was not presented to the
That way, yeah.
And therefore, the, yeah, the posting isn't correct and
Sure.
And the thing is a little, little chopsey chirping.
Well, just to clarify, that wasn't out of malice or intent.
Right. I don't think it, I don't think it was. I, I'm
All I'm trying to do is find the best possible way to move my parents and my grandmother into my home, so
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm doing.
All right. Might I say, might I suggest that we possibly, we could, we could do a couple of things here, the board can. We can possibly continue this.
Mm-hmm.
It would have to be reposted correctly, and it also might be a good idea for you to go in with this with, to see Brian, and maybe knowing the land around your property, maybe one could, could devise an idea that might be more, more acceptable, um, within the, um, the codes of this town that would enable your family to, um, live together on this, on this property.
Okay.
I have a question, though, um, just, just for, I was going to say something else, but I have a question. On this second floor, third floor?
Mm-hmm.
Are they got, you're going to utilize a whole 754 feet for one bedroom, or?
I seriously doubt it. That's quite a lot of space for one bedroom.
Right, so what's the rest going to be, that closet?
I have no idea. I was going to leave it unfinished.
We can deny this without prejudice, which means that we deny it without prejudice. We just deny it because the posting's wrong. Would he then have to pay again to reapply?
Oh, yeah.
Can we, can we waive that?
I would say if, if the application is changing from what was stated in the application of 754 square feet, then, yeah, it's, it's a new application. If you want to stick with the 754 and eliminate the, the third floor, then I think we could probably continue and just say, you know, we're not going to base it on this drawing, but we're going to base it on one floor short of that drawing. Um, you know, that's an option that you have as, as an applicant and that the board has, because that was what was legally notified to your abutters and to everybody.
Right.
So, um, that's one of the options as well.
And I would, and I would think that, um, that gives you the opportunity to work and, and think about it a little bit further, knowing that you, you really, you need to review that third floor issue. So, um, would anybody entertain a motion to continue this till next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to see it continued and not have to have them
Pay again.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to continue, so
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, um, is it going to have to be noticed again?
Yes.
That would be at the town's expense, when the error really wasn't the town's error?
No, it'll be at the applicant's.
So it would, it would, it would have to be
We will continue it with the end, with the agreement that the applicant agrees to
If, if necessary.
Renote, if necessary, renotify.
If, if based on a change
Yes.
If it's necessary to renotice, then that would be up to the applicant.
Okay.
Um, if they are going to stick with the 754, then we can just continue it to that date and hear it on that date, if you want.
Do we have a date to continue it to?
November 5th.
Going to do it to November 5th?
Yeah. Do you understand what we're saying to you? If we, we're trying, I think what everyone is concerned here is, I don't think anybody wants you to have to absorb an application
Right, I appreciate that.
To reapply. The only issue is that, is there is a change in the notice
Mm-hmm.
That was previously sent out, that the abutters will need to be re-notified
Right.
As well as the newspaper articles. And those costs, you would have to incur again.
We usually eat the newspaper
We eat the newspapers. You would have to incur the re-notification of the certified
I have a question. He came the last time, and he had to continue it because it was 1,100, or were there too many square
No, it was denied.
That was denied.
It was denied.
We denied it.
So then he has to come again and pay for another
Yes.
Presentation.
Yes.
Now, okay, you're saying 754 square feet, so what if he does, I mean, you know, 800 or, or whatever it is?
If it's not this, if it's not whatever was notified in your application and what got notified to the public, then the ZBA can't consider that even.
My only
We would have
I know, but my only concern is that it's costing this gentleman how much money to do presentations one after the other.
If it's less than the 754, then that's another, that's another thing. If, if he was doing something less than what we, what was publicly notified, then, um, the ZBA could consider that. But anything higher or, more than what was notified, yeah.
I am. So in other words, instead of 754, he's presenting 1,500 and
Pretty much.
And, and that was not
Larger than what he presented last time.
Right, and that's, that, that is, that just is, I think, a misunderstanding and an assumption on his behalf that was not malicious at all.
Right.
I don't believe he tried to pull any wool over our eyes. I think it's just one of those things that people are not as knowledgeable in our zoning codes as we are, because we've been here for every month.
He's never been to zoning before, you poor guy.
Be getting a lot of us this, this, this year, so, um, is there a motion on the floor to continue?
There is.
And it was seconded by Kathy?
Kathy seconded it.
And you had, you had your discussion?
I'm set.
Okay. So all those in favor to continuing Mr. Grover?
Yes.
Grover's application to the November 5th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there being none, the motion carries 4-0-0.
Good, thank you.
And feel free to discuss this with Mr. Rose.
Well, figure something out for your wife or whoever needs to help make the decision of, you know, whether you want to
Well, Mr. Yatton, did you expect to, uh
If that's the case, then
Okay.
I advise the gentleman, concrete floor plan.
Yeah.
Exactly what he needs for his inheritance, or whatever.
Not doing
Can justify the square footage?
Um, he's not listening. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Could you, yeah.
Not right now.
Okay, yeah. Um, excuse me, Mr. Gro, Grover, I'm just going to
He was, he just made a suggestion for you, Mr.
Mr., well, excuse me, excuse me.
I have to be outside the meeting.
Excuse me. After we finish the meeting, Mr. Yatton is an architect. After we finish this meeting, if you would like to discuss this further with Mr. Yatton, you can at that time. We're going to go forward with, with deciding whether Mr. Yatton is going to be an alternate and accept his application, but it might be in your best interest to wait till after the meeting to, to hear what he might say that might be beneficial for you two. He's offering to talk about, okay? Okay, now, um, in front of us, we have a request for Mr. Alan Yatton, 82 Hill Chris Road in Gostown, New Hampshire, to be considered as an alternate on the Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Well, Mr. Yatton has been, I have been familiar, very familiar with him. Well, I don't wish to be with him again, but no, I will make a motion to accept the application.
I'll second. I would have seconded if Gail didn't.
I, I, as Chairman, um, definitely will vote for this application to be accepted. I have, um, great respect for his knowledge on, um, anything to do with the zoning ordinances and other ordinances in this town, and, um, he certainly comes with a lot of knowledge that will complement us and help us and guide us, um, at the zoning board level, so I also will vote affirmatively.
Are you going to, are you going to approve?
Yeah, I am, I am.
Do we have, do we have a term?
Uh, yes, the only term available is a three-year term, so
Oh, do we
Oh, he's young.
That means I'll be way over 70, but damn, that's over.
And you do have paperwork in your
Well, join the crowd.
folder, so that if the board does vote tonight to, uh, accept his application
Yeah.
Um, I would like each of the board members to sign that paperwork.
Okay.
So that way, I don't have to find you and get you to sign it.
I know, I'm so close.
So, is there a motion on the floor by the members to accept?
There already was.
Oh, and seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, there being none, Mr. Yatton, the vote was 4-0-0, to have you join us as, as the
Zoning Board alternate.
Fourth alternate.
I think it's the
Fifth, it's the fifth alternate.
Wait a minute.
I will be here
Who?
November 5th.
No, no, fourth.
Joe.
Fourth or fifth?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Joe, Yatton, Doucette, Champagne.
Brian stepped down, right?
That's November 4th.
Brian stepped down.
Yeah.
Didn't he? Yeah, it's just, we still have one more application.
We have one more.
One more. We have Joe Firmino.
Yeah, that's right. That's right, because there were two vacancies, but both had three-year terms. That's, that's why I was like, there's
Yeah.
There's only a three-year term left, but there were two three-year terms left.
Well, there's also an election in March, and there's a sign-up in January.
Yeah.
I have plenty of things to do.
Who's trying to
I'm sure.
Okay, so
Is Joe still on the board?
Joe is
Mine is, mine is 14th, 2004, mine is on, up, and Len is up.
Len Stewart?
Len only had a one-year term.
Dan Doucette is up
Who?
As an alternate.
As an alternate.
And Kathy, you're on?
Hers is up as well.
As well.
She only got a one-year until March.
I got a short stint.
Yeah. She wanted to get her feet wet and then see if it worked.
This is very good.
No, you can stay as an alternate anyway, so.
Okay, so that being said, welcome, and we will hopefully see you at the next meeting?
Yes, just so the board knows.
Yes.
Next week I am submitting a project here in Gostown that will require a hearing in front of the board. And hopefully it will be November 5th.
So you'll have to recuse yourself from that, that application.
From just that applicant.
From that application, so that I can be the presenter. And also the proposer, not just the presenter, also the proposer.
Okay.
So you-
So you're the applicant as well as the-
I am the applicant as well, well, the applicant is the current, I am the applicant, the presenter, and I'm doing it for the owner.
Okay.
I have a purchase and sales agreement with the owner on this property.
Okay.
And I'm testing the waters to see if I can get the variances requested or needed to move the project forward.
Okay.
Well, we'll-
And just so you're aware of what it is, 15 Factory Street.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Congratulations.
You just bought it from the town?
We'll see what happens.
Big mill building?
Bought it from the town.
He hasn't bought it yet.
Okay.
Working with the property.
I have a purchase and sales with Mr. Janigan.
Mr. Janigan.
Mr. Janigan.
You know, I have to say, I did like the proposal that was brought, was it to the planning board as a conceptual, not too long ago? Kind of like a village within the village, that kind of like.
Okay.
I think you'll find it, I'll remind you, we have quite a lot of details.
So, for everyone that's here, the New Hampshire Municipal Law Lecture Series, um, they start tomorrow night, um, October 2nd, October 9th and October 16th. Members are, can, asked to go, it's $35 per lecture, $90 for all three, and the town, um, is paying for it. The taxpayers are paying for it. Uh, Lecture 1 is Planning and Fair Housing Laws. Ben Frost is going to be presenting that. Lecture 2 is Conflicts of Interest and Ethical Considerations for Land Use Boards. That's being, uh, Matthew-
That's tomorrow night.
That's tomorrow night.
Because they're not in order.
Oh, but-
When is that, Kathy?
Uh, tomorrow night, lect, October 2nd, at the Dairy Municipal Center, and I'll be glad to have this photocopied for you before you leave. There's a-
I'm not sure if I can get on the meeting.
There's three of them though, tomorrow Wednesday, then the next Wednesday, and then the one after that.
The 2nd, the 9th and the 16th, and- I'm not sure. I don't have that part as to which ones are in which order.
What's the third topic?
Actually, the 16th is Lecture 1.
Right.
The-
Planning and Fair Housing Law.
The, the first one tomorrow is Lecture 2, and the, the one next week is Lecture 3.
Conditions of Approval, How to Draft Language That's Both Clear and Defensible.
These were out of order because of, because of the order that they're doing in another location.
They said the first one was the Conflict of Interest one.
Right.
Tomorrow's Conflict of Interest.
Let's see, I got all mixed up now.
It's confusing.
I got it in there, so I'm going to quote 1. The second one is Planning and Fair Housing.
No, that's 3rd.
Okay, the second one is Conditions of Approval.
Yeah.
And the third one is Planning and Fair Housing Laws. This we will photocopy.
Is planning.
Okay.
And the second is the conflict.
No, conflict is tomorrow.
The second, yeah, the 2nd of October.
Now, if you're, if you're going to register and go, then register and have them either bill the town or you can pay on your own and have the town reimburse you. So, um, you can put the town's address on there as far as billing information, and that should hopefully cover whatever you need.
What time is that?
7 to 9.
That's how you did it, right, yeah?
7 to 9.
That's how you did it?
Yeah.
And you just put the town's address for billing?
Yep.
And that worked?
Yep.
And what's the 9th, what's the?
On the 9th is Conditions of Approval, How to Draft Language That is Both Clear and Defensible.
Okay.
Dan Kreen. Kreen Law Office and Paul Sanderson, they're very good. Um, questions, you can call 1-800-852-3358, extension 3350.
I can also forward you guys all, again, the link. I sent it to you a little while back, and if you don't delete your emails, then you, you'll still have it.
I don't, from the town, I really don't.
But if you-
I remember seeing it.
Yeah, so if you go back into your inbox, you'll find an email from me with a link to where you need to go to sign up for it.
Yeah.
I did see it. I just, I don't know whether I have.
Okay, I don't think there's any other business to take care of.
I want to do the updates on the legal.
Oh, you did, okay.
So, um, just as a piece of information that, uh, two pieces of information that I have for you actually tonight. One is a, um, a notice of, uh, a court order that was a final decision on the Abdalcator case. The town was the, the one that, won that-
Town prevailed?
Prevailed, yeah. So, um, the court did uphold our, our zoning board decision to deny the slaughterhouse on Joppa Hill Road for, for Mr. Abdalcator. Um, and this decision is very well, um, very explanatory as far as, you know, the reasons why the court felt that each item that they discussed was, you know, affirmative for the town. And so, um, you know, they, they, they did a very well-written court order, and, um, I think it's good for the zoning board of adjustment members to read this, um, and, and get a good idea as to how important it is that you are clear and that you, um, make your decisions with reasoning and that you follow the criteria that you're given, because those criteria are what are discussed in this order. I mean, it's, it's nothing to do with, you know, oh, well, you didn't have a clear, a clear enough plan or you didn't, you didn't do one thing or the other. It's, did you meet the criteria for the variance and the special exception, or did you not? So, that's just going to be my plug. And hopefully, uh, we can always continue to make sound decision-making and keep ourselves out of losing appeals.
Yeah, that was a big one.
Then the other piece of, I just, um, took and, and put together a quick update on, uh, the other, there's actually, Abdalcator was one of the five on here. There's four other cases that we are, um, under appeal for. And, actually, the last one really doesn't have anything to do with, um, the zoning board, because that's with the planning board, but that's the Martel case, and, and there were three cases with that, and the only one that's going forward is the planning board case. And they're going through to Supreme Court on that. But the other three, Wayne Peralt versus ZBA and Tristam and Marcella Gordon, they are appealing a denial of, an appeal of administrative decision that the use of a butter's second driveway is allowed. And, um, that was upheld on most points by the courts, but, and they actually tried to remand it back to the ZBA to have one thing clarified, but we never even got that far, because, uh, before we could send it back to you, they appealed it to the Supreme Court, and when that, when that happened, we tried to say, well, wait a minute, we were supposed to have the ZBA do something, and they said, no, we're just going to take this. So, um, that's basically where we're at with that. It, it may at some point come back to you by the Supreme Court.
What was the one issue, do you know?
Um, now you're asking too much.
That's all right. That's, I was just curious if you knew what it was, so we might even, we might have a heads up on it.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll have to go back and remember which, which thing that was, anyway. Um, I, I, I think it was actually just clarifying, uh, for the courts that the ZBA underst, uh, or assumed that the prior decision from Derek Horn on allowing them to have one or two driveways was already taken care of, because they had gone through a couple of appeals with this board. And one of them was not appealed, and that was Derek's decision. And the ZBA sort of, they just wanted the ZBA to make that statement, basically, that they, they, they thought that that was done and couldn't be appealed anymore. Okay, the second one, Frank and Janice Hobbs versus the ZBA and Linda Forsythe. That one, they're, the attorneys are working on, uh, a settlement, so I don't know if it ever will make it to court on that. The applicant is, um, I think, going to try to move that green tent shed to a location that meets setbacks. And I think that's the crux of where the settlement was going to come in.
There was some, there was some real discussion in that one as to where the property line was too. That was a big issue with the, with that one as to, um, he said, she said where the property line was. One, one side it was said one place, one side said another place, and we're trying to decide if the shed was on somebody else's property. So I'm sure those are those issues that they could probably settle.
They did have a survey plan, so I mean, that's, I don't know how-
Well, they both did.
Anyway, uh, Abdalcator we spoke about, and then the last one is Alger versus ZBA in St. Anselm College. That one, um, they are trying to resolve it prior to going to court. Um, we're waiting on a, a response from St. Anselm College. But the app, the, the appellate, um, party is hoping that, you know, CNA's will basically restrict usage of the lights to certain kinds and things like that, and, you know, that would basically make them happy and they pull their appeal. So, we're, uh, we're hoping that that'll all-
It's very, it's very, very helpful. I'm, I'm very glad to see this. This, I don't think we had this, I've seen something like this before, so this is good. Because it keeps us up to date as to what is going on with faces that are handled, so. Good. Thank you very much, Brian.
You're welcome.
So, there'll be nobody else sitting here, no other applications, so I hear a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 4, 0, 0. We will see you all next month, November 5th, 7 o'clock. Have a good Columbus Day weekend and be safe over Halloween.